Six thirty-two.
It's six thirty-two and it is Tuesday, January eleventh. This is a joint meeting of the Situate Select Board and the Situate Planning Board. I would like to ask the agenda be accepted by the board selection. Move on with the panel, Alec Gaver.
Aye.
Five zero, Marsha Cameron.
And I would like to ask the planning board to agree to agenda.
Agenda.
Alec Gavers?
Aye.
Aye. All right, here we go.
Let us begin. I think, I'll just be brief and say that Anne had asked us to have this meeting. We do have the master plan, it's been approved by town meeting. If you'd like, I think jointly to be a document that we actually use and we got to put on a shelf and for demo by it and take it down and we have to take it down and update it again. So, I think everyone on both boards has had the opportunity to not just review the final document but to have input through meetings and through circulation of drafts for us to all have something to say about it. I think it's a well-done document. I would like to point out though that as we move forward, I think we need to get the school plan, whatever document they have, and attach it to this plan so that we not forget when you, when we're looking at this plan, especially as it relates to capital projects, that the schools have needs and they're in the capital plan. The one thing that's not in the capital plan at this point is the school which is moving. So, that's all I have to say and I'll turn it over to Anne, maybe you can start the discussion about why we're here today.
All right, we're here because all too often, as we all know, this plan ends up on the shelf and we dust it off at an election time or we call it out, whatever. But this plan actually won an award, so it's a very, very well-done master plan. And there are, I mean, we have sent, gave the all of those to you. We really would like to put together some group made up of number people, select board, planning board, whatever, to go through all of this and start the implementation of it. And the thing is, it will ultimately cost money. It will everything cost money. And my concern, as I said to Karen, my overview of this study is that once a group, any group of us comes up with theoretically a plan, and this is what we would like to do, all too often, one or two people do something. And I don't want that to happen. We have to come to a consensus. We have to realize that we're not going to please everybody with how we go forward. We have to deal with resilience. We just go two hundred, what is it, two hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand for how resilience? There's all kinds of talk about that. We get fifty thousand dollars for water. There's so many different things that we need to do. Where do we start? And it's all about small successes. So if we can not necessarily check and pick but figure out what we need to do going forward in this. And we need to communicate with one another. This is not going to happen in the bathroom. It isn't, it can't. It's too important. It's our future. Okay? Any comments from my board? Patty?
Not up.
Not right now. Any questions? Can I? Your board.
We usually have comments, don't we? Why don't we start with, oh, let's pick this camp.
Anne, I think you said it perfectly. We have a great plan and we prioritize how to move forward in the context of all moving pieces. So, I think you're right, putting together folks that are articulate in those moving pieces will help us sort through it, otherwise we're just going to stare at the other one. So, yeah, taking fights. I don't think any of these are small projects, so it is going to be a big thing. So, thanks for coming.
I certainly concur, like, we have the same fear of having this and just leaving it on the shelf and make sure, but I just, I just want to echo that communication piece of both folks talking and making sure and telling what's happening. I think it's going to be so critical for this to be a success, and I think it will be a success, but it is such a great document and somebody to finish. So, you know, if I'm good with a group that's willing to share and make sure that everyone kind of knows what's happening, I think we'll make that process a lot easier, so go for it.
You don't comment?
Yeah. I also want to say that we have to be able to agree to disagree. We have to. And just because we don't agree with something doesn't mean it's good, bad, or different. I'd like to get that right up on the table. So if you look at the overview, we have to determine infrastructure costs as far as the county budget is concerned, zoning changes, development policies, you know, who's responsible and how we're going to do all of this. And one of the discussions that we had with Karen and Patty, Karen Joseph, Michael Devon and myself was coming up with a group of, how many was it Karen? You can write that down.
I've written about nine people.
Right, and that's probably, you can write it down somewhere, because nine members of the committee could be unyielding. So you wrote it down to be exactly seven that we would recommend.
Okay, and you have a list, and can you just remove your masks so that we can hear you better?
It's on the, it's on the, it's on the list, yeah.
It's under, it's under.
If I could intervene, I think the idea of this group is not that it's yet another committee, but the people on this committee have the ability both financially and organizationally to take certain pieces of this plan and decide based on the plan and based on their best judgment as to how it's going to work out. Because, you know, we have some committees in town that have a lot of ideas, but they don't have any money or they don't have the ability to direct anyone to do anything. So I think more important is to make sure that people on this particular working group do have the ability to say, look at, let's just pick planning and development. There's a whole list of things within this plan that are in the purview of planning and development. And they do have personnel and they do have access to funds, whether it's funding directly from the town, funding from CPC, funding from housing grants, et cetera. So, to the extent that there are pieces that they can agree, each group would agree to pick up, DPW has a lot of skin in this game, and they're the ones who have the money and manpower, but they have to be directed by various other groups as to what's on the priorities. So, that's why this list looks like it's only department heads, but there was a reason why we thought of it that way. If people want to comment, you know, if they think that's not the right direction or should we go strictly with a volunteer committee?
Well, just to, maybe we could back the board, we kind of around the room and really get a chance to sort of say what I think we've imparted in this plan. And that is that one of the biggest challenges facing the town is climate change, sea level rise and all of the relative elements that go with that. And I think the objective should be to look at this not as a, not as a one-year sort of timeframe, but look at the long run, figure out what changes we need to make in policy and maybe even capital investment, and figure out where we're not going to be able to make capital investments. There's so many things I saw here, two hundred million dollars in Oregon, and I just don't see the town having the financial capacity to tackle some of those things. So I think it's going to be really important to sort of figure out what our options are and look at it as a longer-term decision. And they integrate that kind of thinking into capital planning, into, you know, zoning changes and development and that kind of thing. I think that's really a big challenge here because we are facing something that is, could, you know, really break the back pretty easily here. And it challenges the thing that people like the most about Situate, you know, the seacoast and all of that, you know? I see that as kind of the challenge, is how do we, you know, when you look at some of the plans that we've sort of integrated in here, they all had interesting ideas, but to me, they all looked, a number of them looked like just infeasible in terms of economic capability. And so at the end of the day, I think those are the bigger decisions that sort of need to be figured out how to integrate into our decision-making process, if you will. So, I mean, I'm fine with putting a committee together to do it, I just think that's going to be the challenge as opposed to looking at things on a kind of a small timeframe kind of basis.
And in echoing on with Steve's comments is that we have to be willing to say we are not going to do something as well, not as we're not going to try and to be charging everything, there are some things we're going to have to walk away from. And as someone who does not live on the coast, there is some concern to those of us who live in the woodlands that resilience and climate change also affects those of us in the forest, which is why we don't want this. So I think if people think about climate change and resilience and they own it in the coastline, it's the entire chunk that we have to keep in mind.
Yeah, I would say that's definitely true. I think that, you know, it feels like the big ticket items, the big investment items are along the coast because of, you know, just the ongoing.
Which we can say, I mean, certainly we can support that, but there's also resilience and things that come to the other side of the climate.
Miss Campbell.
I just have a question. I think the recommended players are the appropriate players because it is so complicated not come with the expertise. My question is, how do we envision who's driving the boat? This, you know, this group chooses on this, comes to this stuff, they're going to have to come, but I assume come before us or we'll have to have some sort of reconciliation between approaches or something. But how do you envision sort of it structurally working? Because we didn't appoint these people, but they need to have directions from both our boards about how to proceed.
Years ago, there was a committee put together to study the municipal services in the town and field weeks and talk for and we'll be co-chairs. And then a little group of people, I don't remember how many, but I was part of it, Marlene was on it. And we were all delegated with certain aspects of municipal services. And we came back and each gave a score, whether you liked it or whether you didn't. We interviewed all kinds of people and so on. So, I mean, it's something, I would envision this to be somewhat the same, that we would delegate, find out different interests, talk to different people and find out where we're going, how they feel we should get there. But this is not, as Steve has pointed out, this is long-range. This is twenty years or more, and we'll be retired and half the call is rest home. But there are younger people that are coming after us, and honestly, we do need to educate them about where we're going and how we're going to get there.
Yeah, I, just to sort of go on that, I don't mean to say this is long-range, like we'll get to it in a couple of decades. It's really here and now, but making decisions that are, you know, longer time.
We have to start right now, right now. And it's, we have a plan. What do you all think? Where are we going? How are we going to get there? Who wants to be involved?
I mean, this is just really, really, really important, which is why I requested that we have this joint meeting so that we can talk to one another.
So do you want to know what of us, all of us, what we did the highest priority in the master plan is? Community's water. I'll say that right out, it's either wastewater treatment plant and it's the water treatment plant. That is my number one priority to see going forward, that I think if we could somehow settle that and get that on the train moving forward, that, for me, that is our biggest issue basically talking overall.
Bob?
I agree with Karen. I'm sorry, I agree with Patty. I'm sorry. Sorry, I agree with Patty. I think that water issues long-term are going to be what really should be driving the boat on what we do and where we get our water, you know, how it's treated, like the sewage issues and how we deal with that as going forward. I think that if we get those nailed down with a long-term plan, then a lot of other things will start going into place.
Devon? Water is definitely one. I would, I'm going to go with getting the sewer to more Situate. I know that's close there, but I think we can forget about it, it's got to stay in everybody's mind as we move forward.
Anne?
Well, for me, and this is one of the reasons why I think having this joint meeting is good, and potentially having this subcommittee is good. For me, when I, you know, I was intimately involved in kind of the creation of this plan and now that we have everything finished and I, you know, I've read and reflected on it, one of the things that's become a little bit overwhelming to me is kind of how much there is that we're kind of expected to implement or that, you know, we've gathered from feedback from the public as well as from various reports that, studies that have been done, that we've synthesized into this. And so for me, it's hard, it's hard for me to say what, you know, I can anecdote to say what I think might be the best, but in terms of, or highest priority, but in terms of where the town needs to go, I find it a little bit overwhelming and that's where I kind of want to get our heads together on how to prioritize this. One of the things I've brought up before with this board is regarding implementation, I think we need to kind of go through the fine-tooth comb and take the smaller, more granular pieces and delegate to those boards or committees that can make those action items done now. You know, if it's a land use zoning change, then, you know, let's figure out how to do that, the planning board can deal with that, or ZDA, whoever needs to deal with however it's right now. But some of these larger, broader projects, annotate a group like this or potentially subcommittee to really get at what Steve's talking about, which is kind of planning for the future, both in terms of the mechanics of how that, I don't even know what's called policy is implemented, and then also the financial aspect of how it's going to fit into capital planning and everything. So, I'm still a little bit overwhelmed on how to do that, and I think that would be a good starting point for all of us is to determine how do we prioritize these different things to make them actionable.
I have a question. Is there, are there clip notes to this plan anywhere? Because I think whatever one, what I'm hearing, I think that we're overwhelmed by the amount of information here and how do we dissect it and prioritize it?
Well, you know, it might be worthwhile looking at the list of recommendations that we handed out, right? Because this, try to boil it all down, and it's a lot of stuff, I agree with that. But if you, if you sort of dive through it and look at it in detail, sort of look at the list, you begin to see where I think what Dan's talking about, there are ways to take pieces off and do other things, but, I mean, if I just look at the first item, which is climate change and sea life problems, you start looking at the list of things that it says here, elevate structures, enhance and raise seawalls, reinforce art-engineered infrastructure.
Well, if some of those things are happening today, so maybe it becomes some of the responsibility and it's this group to create the grid of, okay, what's in progress and process already, right? What kind of progress are we already making? How much more do we need to do, accomplish and check it off completely?
Well, how much more we need to do is what I think is kind of the key, right? Because if you look at some of the recommendations that people have started to work on, things like elevating roadways, I don't know that there's going to be enough money and time to do all of that, right? And so the question is, should we prioritize what we're going to focus on and not even in that small piece of it? I just don't see the town having the economic capacity to do that kind of thing. And then you add seawalls back and all this, and yeah, we would like to get, you know, sort of federal funding and all that, but I think every coastal town in the United States is going to be looking for the same thing.
For sure.
So, you know, to me, it's sort of looking at those, those plans and saying, what's realistic? Do we have the capacity to do that internally? Or, you know, is that not really an option? Or is only a part of it an option? Because otherwise, we could focus all of our efforts on one thing and forget about all these other things like schools and everything else. That's what I'm.
So if you take this and make some sort of a grid to be, you know, word of document, because word documents shall work for me.
I actually make lists of things.
That means you need like a product of something that you've already done. And then you can collect it and look back and look at it and then start your prioritization.
Well, so for example, we just had a long talk the other night in our meeting about financing the new water treatment plant. That hopefully is going to take us a long way toward helping with our water problem. The bigger problem I see that we haven't thought, it's been thought about, but the sewer treatment plant, that's in a really difficult location. And not only is it a difficult location, it's not, it's not even clear that there's a better location for it. So how do we address that? Because unless we can deal with that, and maybe that's ten years down the road, but clearly, we have to start thinking about that. But I think we have taken a lot of initiatives that, you know, as much as people think, well, we're just overdeveloping here, we've preserved a lot of space, we bought a lot of property, we have done a lot to enhance the town. But I think, for example, that CPC would welcome some sort of real direction from the town about what the town wants and needs with the CPC funding we've got. And oftentimes, it's just that if the project sounds like a good project, you know, they leave it up to town meeting, but if town meeting just votes on things that it's, are nice to do, is that the way we want to vote? So I think there are some committees that would welcome some sort of direction, saying, this is part of the master plan, this is part of, you know, your charge, so what we do with the beaches or, I think would be, and we've still got some things up there. I know that the, we've still got some, we're going to talk about it in a couple of weeks when we can get together in person, the coastal initiatives and the beach initiatives in terms of what's on the agenda now. And to be honest with you, I'm looking at that listing, even though there's federal money attached to some of these things, maybe that's not enough to make it worth taking the federal money if it's not part of our overall plan.
Or is it just a stopgap measure at this point, right?
Right.
And that you're really shoveling against the tide?
Right, in more ways than one. Well, it's like putting sand on a more situated beach. Sounds good, but.
Just ends up down in the spit and like.
Well, then it goes to Duxbury where they.
And then we dredge it.
Right.
But I think that's right, and, you know, even the wastewater treatment plant, it's a question of, you know, what is the long-term plan for that? You know, you, we had the maps in the, in the master plan about, you know, the increasing sea level and, you know, wastewater treatment plants in a pretty vulnerable position. And how much money do you put into that thing even over the next ten years versus put into an effort to, maybe you have to relocate it or something.
Well, that could be a real environmental, public safety, public health catastrophe right here.
Yeah, so just like to talk about sea level rise versus like coastal erosion, like where Situate is located is basically the delta of the North River. So it's like the low-lying area, the marshy area, there are a couple rocky promontories which we call First, Second, Third and Fourth Cliff. And those rocky promontories like are pretty good, like you don't have flood insurance if you live on, you know, Second or Third Cliff, you don't need flood insurance because it's not going to, it's not going to flood there. Where the flooding is going to come from is like, you know, the constant erosion of the sandy areas of, of the town. So that would have to be taken into primary consideration. As far as sea level rise goes, that's like still like, you know, no wind, no waves, the height of the seawater, that mean high tide or something. The, the forecast elevation change in seawater, or in the seawater level over the next one hundred years is point nine four feet. So we're talking eleven and a half inches over one hundred years. So over twenty years, it's going to be one fifth of that. So, we're talking about two inches with all the building and stuff that's going in now elevation change, or building elevation and stuff, sorry, this mask is causing a short breath, but anyway, like having buildings elevated or infrastructure hardened, seawalls going up, stuff like that, already takes that into account. But where you end up finding like this flooding, this weird flooding starting to come from and starting to show itself is when we have the actual sandy erosion, like, and stuff like that happening, not because of the, the rise in the sea level. It's just the wave action, it's eroding, you know, it's eroding the sandy beaches, Pegate Beach, like all that stuff going down towards the spit, down towards Marshfield, Duxbury and stuff like that. So, I would say, you know, as far as like flooding and like the way things are going to change in the next twenty years, it should definitely be, you know, how are the beaches, how are the sandy areas going to change? You know, where are we going to get these new breaks like coming from? Like, you know, the spit is trying to close back to, back to Hummer Rock, you know, we keep on dredging it, but that's because it wants to go back there. And originally, that was a barrier beach that kept flooding from Marshfield and part of like, you know, the southern parts of Situate. So considering like the sea level rise is okay, but it's not going to have any real effect, like the effect is going to be coastal erosion.
I would not necessarily agree with that. And I don't think we should be looking at sea level rise as some very long thing that's going to happen. Things are changing rapidly and even the estimates of sea level rise are changing rapidly as people have evaluated, you know, how big an impact it would have. So, I would, I would be much more cautious about it at that. And, you know, we see, you see things flooding all the time without high winds and waves. We're in Cole Park, what you get over there, it's be underwater, you know, just with a high tide.
During the king time?
No, during the winter time. Winter time.
Maybe we should. But I don't, it's not because of, it's not because like, oh, you know, the seas are rising or something. It's really not, but.
Sorry, that's a, shit too much, I mean, we talked about how this is actually going to be implemented beginning back to the project, but the way that I see this, I guess maybe I see this a bit more simply, in a lot of ways, this is a lens of which to see this, right? So if we have this committee and I look at the folks that are on here, part of them not forgetting for me is making sure that wherever it's already happening, there's already things happening, we know, are those important? I mean, if you ask me what are my priorities, you know, I'd like to be passionately dispassionate and say, these are my priorities, if it fits, whatever, just more danger in front of us doesn't fit into that group, right? And I think that has to be a major aspect as a charge to say, hey, throw the red flag and that is totally out of, not out of, not anywhere in here, we need to know, oh, that's right. Because everyone, we don't always have that, that kind of sense. And the second aspect would be that more proactive. So, I don't know, it's maybe I'm simplifying it, but to me, those would be the two main responsibilities, double-check and then just, again, the harder the possible.
I would say that's, that was kind of how it was created, to create the, the range of, you know, kind of long-term plans around which decisions to evaluate and measure. I think that's the case. And, you know, we talked a lot here about sea level rise, there's a lot of other things on this list who have been identified, and they're all going to be. And they're all going to compete for resources at the same time, too. I think using it as a way to help set direction, policies and making decisions around the framework is really a good way to think about it.
Yeah, I guess I'd add, you know, it's a daunting task, right? We're trying to prepare our town for changes in the world and in a very limited financial model and in a task that's really too big for us to get our arms around, which is why these plans sit on the shuttles, just too much. So I think what we have to do is, you know, our biggest tool is policy. We have to set policies that move people in this direction. As Andrew was saying, it's not going to happen overnight. As Steve was saying, we don't have the financial resources to do this and we won't. You know, we've been doing this for 20 years, but, you know, we keep thinking we're going to get $100 million of federal money, it's not going to happen. You know, so we have to, you know, we have to, you know, we just mentioned water and sewer, we're working on all this. You know, we're working on every one of these things as we can, you know? We have to keep our town functioning and then we know the priorities and we kind of push them forward when we can. And then we have some dramatic situation, right? Like the water treatment plant is not functioning properly. So we're going to spend $60 million to fix it, right? We're going to piss off the town because they're tapping into the roof and the lawyers are looking through and then we're going to have to settle back down and, you know? So our goal is kind of to push these initiatives the best we can, but prioritize them, you know, figure out which ones we can do because we can't do it all. It's just too much to do it all, you know, other than that kind of crawling efforts to move all of them forward a little bit. But pick the few that we think are the biggest priorities and try and get them to focus on it. And that's where we can take a limited resources that we have, make it a little bit more bang for your buck and move every initiative or two forward is what I've seen of it. You know, there's a lot here, you know, we can debate sea water, we can debate all this sort of stuff, but we have to be able to do something. We have to be able to make an effort. Otherwise, it gets overwhelming. Create a group of people that come up with an idea to spend $100 million on the seawall and we say, sorry, we can't, thanks for your energy. You know, so we really have to, we really have to point people in a direction where we can get some wins, in my opinion, right? I think that's where we can take pieces of this and say, you know, here are the things for the next two or three years that we're going to try and make a concerted effort to do better than just the normal steps quickly. And I don't know if those two can go, but, you know, I think we've become essentially more what we can do.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, you know, the way my head was going is how do we manage our resources appropriately, meeting our personnel resources because they're limited. So if we create policy and checkpoints and say, okay, if you're working on X, is it a priority within the master plan? No, then you need to go here, you know, if it's an emergency situation, whatever it is, or Y, follow the next steps, you know, where does it fall with the prioritization list? Because that's the only way we're going to start chipping things. The mindset, I mean, only way we'll start chipping things off and also giving our staff some good guidance. Because at the end of the day, you're the ones that are doing everything from a day-to-day basis. So even just looking at taking some of the suggestions of, you know, criteria to add into the capital plan or resiliency, you know, all those suggestions, you know, we've got to amend that probably for the next capital round. Add that as a criteria for evaluation to the initiative board. So I'd love to see us, you know, maybe this working committee does that first step and brings together that rubric, kind of identifies some sort of process. And then we convene as a group and help prioritize it or whatever, not, you know, standing firm on that. But I think as a first step, we've got to bring the information together in a little bit more on a concrete way than this wonderful document. That. I mean, what I'd like to do, I agree with you, but I think page 100 actually gives the committee the marketing word, you know, both tests and maybe some of the stuff to make sense. And then once we've been one through 11, then come back and have that conversation. Yep, so we got to do it.
And it's work and it's difficult and it's to a certain extent, I'd like to tell you these benefits. This is showing, this pointed out, you know, this is what everybody does. Because ultimately, as you pointed out, the water rates are going to go up, which means sea rates are going to go up and this is going to happen and that's going to happen. And we just have to be very, very clear that this is why we're doing it. It has to be done. It has to be done.
The only other piece of labor talked about is really the marketing of it. You know, we haven't get it out to the town that this is important. And Karen, you mentioned CPC, right? They don't pay attention to any sort of plan. I've mentioned this for years and it's just not what that is. So if we made a policy that said 50% of CPC spending has to go towards an initiative that is, you know, improves the capital point, well, that's, you know, a baby step in our direction.
I think they would be happy to do that. I just don't think that's the way it's been operated.
Right.
It's our opportunity to change the policy.
You only create a policy that says if it doesn't fall into this group, then it can't, these funds can't be used for.
Right. You know, and there are smaller things, quality of life things that, you know, we can't decide we're not going to buy a loader for the transfer station because it's not in the master plan. Well, we have to do this.
It's not the objective of the master plan.
No, but my point is, we do have to do all those other things.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'd like to see, for example, the beach commission be given more clear understanding about, you know, what their role is. And they provide, they can help provide the quality of life that people feel is very important in this town, the beaches. And their role is not big. On the other hand, you've got the coastal advisory commission that I think is still kind of in search of what their mission is and they've been, you know? So I think there are small things in the plan that we can certainly identify as being doable, but the big ones, those are, you know, those are important. I mean, I would think that we should at least be thinking about where would we put a wastewater treatment plant? Or would we elevate the one that we currently got? Is there a way to do that? I view that as the next big thing in terms of public safety and health. And I guess I'd like to be sure that when we're at the end of the new water treatment plant, that we've solved a lot of the problems that we've got. So I think there's a lot in here that we're already doing and I think there's a lot of momentum for a lot of things, but, and it's a very optimistic plan. I mean, for them to suggest, for people to suggest that we're going to raise the roads, well, we tried that down in Hummer Rock and by $1,000 later, the road's still down there and people in Hummer Rock are still complaining about the fact that the rocks are coming up on their houses and all this stuff. And, I mean, that's another whole situation down there. I don't frankly see, as much as it would be nice, I don't see us elevating Front Street. Should we push people, as Anna and I were talking about, you push the zoning up the hill, that might be a good idea, but on the other hand, you are going to piss a lot of people off if you suggest that.
But you know what? It was suggested years ago.
Right.
And it's something that we really need to think about. And I understand that there can spend a lot of raisin reconstruction on the side streets that go up to Hazel. But as time goes by and if you push some of the retail or whatever up the hill, you could end up with any breakfast, you could end up with any number of different things that we do not have right now. And it amazes me, if you look at the line for the harbor, how it goes along and then where the Learys live, it comes down and includes their house and residential and then it goes back up and it's half a hotel. It makes no sense at all, none. So zoning is an issue, it's the planning board's issue, but we need to work with you all to market, as you pointed out, this going forward. Is it a perfect solution? Absolutely not. Once upon a time, they thought about making Front Street one way up Vivianam and down Hazel, so it was one big loop. Is that something to think about? Who knows? These are different ideas that talk about zoning, they talk about economics, all those little itty-bitty things. The Welsh Company, I mean, I worked there 30, 40 years ago and at a high tide, it was up against the building. And that was 45 years ago and it's still up against the building. So who is to say? It's coming, but is it coming tomorrow? Well, it might, you never know. So we have to make a start right now with all of us. We're all in this. And then if we can somehow put together a group and bring in some younger people who we can train who will, who we can get involved and be passionate about the town, everyone will be going, wow, this is the golden knock forever. Used to be they'd get on the bus and go to work and unless it affected them directly, they didn't care. And we've had that now. 50% of the people in this town care, but they end up fighting for each other to get anything done. And we have to stop. We have to work together and that's why we're here tonight.
I'm saying again that this is not a great place, it is the only place that we have right now.
Right.
Now's the time to really steer forward. They have great political courage. We are two highly elected official boards in this town. We make a lot of policy, it is within our control to create the destiny of the town. And we can do that, this, all of us. We all know what we know is best, we all have really good ideas, we do, we talk to a lot of people. But this is, again, to reinforce this, I went and worked very hard on this master plan for over a year to try to, and it was hard to get that by, it was really hard, but we did it in the end. We worked really hard. So we do know people who would come up on the door and say, can you come and help us? We come back. I think who is missing in our, if you're a group though, is somebody like from, there's somebody with water sources, people, but somebody like a Becky or somebody like that who, a friend, people who are intimately involved in what it is that they do. We need to find those people who are in their own little closet and bring them out into the open to see what it is to share. Because everybody has an idea of how to deal with a problem. It's just not being expressed to all of us. And then they get frustrated, the hell they're not listening to what's near you, that's by the problem.
And the other thing is, you can't wait for people to volunteer for something.
Yeah.
You have to go out and beat the bushes and ask them, come and work for us, come and do this for us. We need you.
I would recommend, we can sit here and, you know, talk about that all night long. So I would recommend that, you know, we identify, so to exactly to your point, right? There are stakeholders already in our committees around town. So as we go through this rubric and these goals, this implementation, what committee should take that down? So for instance, our resiliency, we have a coastal resource officer, we have the coastal advisory committee, now they have a charge, right? You know, we can hone it in and bring in, we've got them. We've got open space, we have a conservation commission. So we've got people in place to delegate a lot of these charges to. And to your point, both of your points about the marketing, you know, maybe part of our goal is to go out and interview these committees and say that, you know, we commit together, these are the priorities, this is the rubric, this is your charge that we need you to work into your annual plan and your annual calendar. So we're looking at it and having us check the balances as we move along. And to your point, I mean, we have tried, we've, I will tell you that a lot of the new folks that are coming forward are young. They're in their 40s, it's awesome to see them, but you're right, we have to keep digging deeper. So I think there are a lot of committees already in place that can take on the responsibility of helping to move this forward.
Well, if I could add to that, we have an entire list of people who contributed to this report, who participated and who now I think that someone needs to go back, maybe, I don't know, we'll have to figure that out, and get those people regroup and say, okay, you know, so what do you see here that you might want to be involved in? Because they did, they weren't involved.
Yep.
And maybe they think their job is over, but the truth is, it's not.
It's just scary.
So, you know, and I appreciate all the efforts they made, all the meetings they went to and, but, and I assume a lot of them actually read the plan and made comments on it and I would think they would have some sort of stake in it.
And then one of the things that we might consider doing is reconvening the group to the master plan because unfortunately, COVID interfered big time. And so the group was never really able to have what I would consider to be closed. And it was put together at the end, it was well done, but I think maybe if people are willing to have a final meeting over the middle school to rapid, to give it closure.
Well, and ask for volunteers.
And volunteers and all of this, go with you, Sam.
Well, are you referring more to the master plan advisory committee or more to the public?
It was both.
I'm specifically referring to the people listed.
So as the one I was like trying to logistically manage all that, I can't say that there's a huge loss to follow up with that group where people, I don't know if it was just their life moved on or they became disinterested or, it was really hard at the end to get a lot of people. Some people just stuck with time, up together for months. And I don't think it would be worth any of our time, even.
Okay, that's fine.
No, no, I mean, there's certainly people who would cherry pick from that group that would show up to a meeting right away and would be happy to do like a debrief and what's next kind of dialogue. But I think we have to think about who else we might want to reach out to or it might just be a smaller group that we all think it would be.
Well, maybe we can take that group who you think is appropriate, who will come back in and then we pull in the chairs of conservation and chair of coastal, which, you know, the key folks that we can plug in to be those leaders to hear the summary and fill in those gaps.
Yeah, it might make sense, I, it might almost make sense to reach out to that group first and before even inviting, just say, do you want to do this? Because if not, I don't think it makes sense to try to put that into recruiting them to come back.
You mean your group?
Yeah, yeah, so I might just, I can talk with Karen, I can talk about it, reach out to that group again. No, but I agree that we'll see what, see who comes out and then decide who else we can bring in, you know, forward to the meeting members.
I don't want to be the dead horse, but I guess I want to, you can piggyback on what both of my colleagues were talking about, are instituting, the marketing and instituting the policy, I think is so critical, even if it's, you don't even think it's necessarily, if you're in the historical committee, yeah, those buildings, what is their climate change that could affect one of those buildings, recreational, I mean, to think even just outside some of those different kind of boxes where we're going, I think is going to be critical. And we could absolutely kind of institute that, that's, I think is going to go such a far away to help the marketing and getting people to think about it and not just, or keep giving it to the horse, right?
No, but it's important, maybe that's one of the primary roles of this core group that you guys have listed here.
The other thing to do is, well, let me, you know, with Andrew, with the moral of saying, I mean, more started this whole thing out, is there a clip in those versions of this plan? Right, so there's a living initiative right here by category. But what does that mean to Joe Schmo who lives on some street? You know, what does land use mean? What does climate change mean? So if there was a one pager for each one of these things that says climate change means Front Street is going to go away, you're going to lose Hummer Rock, you know, these are the results of potential climate change. Land use, what does that mean? And you have examples and pictures and whatever people need to actually understand what these things are so that we can say this is our priority to move towards these tasks, I think is important. Because nobody's going to read the plan unless you have to. And people don't know what it is, you know? Climate change is too big for somebody to comprehend. So you've got to really point out what the initiatives of each one of these things are. Bullet point them, you know, water infrastructure, what does that mean? Sewer, you know, people think about sewer, but they think about extension. They don't think about that that area is lowland, good flood and not to use at all. So I think to get all that documented is important for even this team and say, okay, now we've taken each one of these things with five bullet points, what do we think is important? And the other point I was going to say is, we can hire somebody to help us do this. You know, we can hire consultants to do something for, you know, relatively short money, give five or 10... give us five or ten thousand dollars and help us do this, as opposed to hoping at some, you know, someone that is doing part-time and is in the work. You know, if we get it organized and get it directed.
So Andrew, based on what you said about marketing, the best marketing job I ever saw was the guys that came in for Willow's Park. I'll tell you, those guys must have been pros, they played golf there. You need somebody like that on the street to say, this is how, that is the best marketing I've ever seen. Totally, completely impressive, twenty-five years to see somebody. And having it done in a year, to raise that kind of money and be able to implement that kind of project in a year, it's really impressive. But you need someone who has that kind of, I only have that kind of experience in the marketing department. Let's have somebody like those guys come in and be able to say, go the wrong way, you need to go back over this way a little bit. We can handle what, swallowing what is essential. We need somebody like that to avoid going through anything wrong.
Well, I think that suggests that a consultant can probably help us sell the plan, because I think what we're talking about, because clearly, not everything in this can be done. But some of it, just letting people understand that there are people who are talking about this, people who are working on this. I think a lot of people think that Green Bush just sort of, all of a sudden appeared out of nowhere.
And how does that happen? Oh, my God.
You know, and I get upset personally when people get angry about the John Drew project or the quote-unquote Cumberland Farms, you can't get that out of people's heads. Those projects, I think they're only going to add, what do we have there? A virtually empty parking lot next to the sand and gravel or the concrete pipe place. And I think Green Bush is a really good example of zoning and long-term planning and long-term efforts to make a difference. And I think that's going to be the same for North Situate. And I'm afraid of the low deck, we're probably going to get, if that actually doesn't get the sewer in there, what's going to happen down there? Because all of a sudden, those poor little stab of the buildings, they're going to be valuable. And people are going to want to put apartments, they're going to want to put, you know, stores and things. And all of a sudden, well, it was such a quaint little village. Well, it isn't anymore. So I don't know why you're going to, I'm not on that.
Yeah, but I think selling it, selling the plan to people, saying, if you can't read it, we're going to summarize it for you, and we're going to tell you what we, as these two boards and what other boards we bring in, are recommending as, this is what we're taking out of this. We can't do everything, but these are the important things. I don't think they missed anything. I mean, other than the schools, I don't think they missed a thing.
No, we picked up a lot of different plans and reports and recommendations. And I really do think part of it is going to be look at some of those and say, is that something we really are going to be able to do? And should we just take it off our list?
Right.
And the plan, I would expect, is going to change with time. I would just, because we pick it up and everybody who did, you know, an individual plan, we're only looking at for their individual things. They didn't cross-connect everything. So I think you'll find that as you go through this, you have to make decisions on what efforts we should continue or maybe discontinue. Take that one, too, well.
I think going along with that idea of like the consultant, I think that's a great idea. But also to look into, you know, part of, like, some of the recommendations that are made in the, you know, the strategic plan, but then also the boards and committees that are in town. They, you guys were saying, they're literally, they have these ideas, but they don't have any money. There's tons of money out there for grants, and, I mean, it might be a seventy-five, twenty-five split for money, but at least it's not a full one-hundred percent capital expenditure from the town. And I think being able to line up, like, the wish list with the grants that are out there, and then being able to finagle, like, how to properly write the grant, you know, we're, you could get a COVID grant from the state to do roadways or something like that. I mean, you know, the bureaucrats can finagle that kind of stuff. So finding out how to do that, I'm a bureaucrat, too. But like, you know, like getting good grants written and then, you know, comes down on a lot of like the town's spending, and hopefully there aren't too many federal or state strings attached to it.
Well, actually, to be honest, I think the town's done a pretty good job of getting grants and a pretty good job of setting up, for example, Beach Commission has a revolving fund, and so they do have some resources. And there are other various places where there are resources that they need maybe to be pointed in a different direction perhaps. But one thing I'd like to ask Jim is, has, have you, Nancy, or anyone else looked at this as a capital plan in light of any adjustments that might be made? And I'm not just talking about this year, but we have a five-year capital plan.
Yeah, so one of the big things we did this year, as you see the coastal projects that are in the capital plan, I have them, and they've been kind of out there by themselves. We have accounted for those, so those are in there. We are putting our facilities plan, every year we have minor facilities on our facilities plan that we did. Those have been funded the last two years, we passed all our facilities, sorry. We're putting out a water infrastructure, we're going to go to our capital plan. If you look at the capital plan, there's four million dollars this year for INI, a sewer that is designed to create enough capacity for North Situate. By 2025, the North Situate Sewer Project is in the capital plan. This is an aside, Situate's, but Cohas is supposed to get back to us this month and tell us like there are oceans and sewers. So we've started to incorporate a lot of that stuff, and a lot of the capital plans, the water plans, the sewer plans, they're incorporating all those into their capital plans. So we are seeing that on those, too. It's one of the things for everybody here, we have a rating sheet for capital projects. And one of the rating sheets says, isn't it in compliance with one or more of the goals of the capital plan? That's worth three points. One is worth two points, and if it's not, it's zero or less. So we take that into account, so I'd be reluctant to add a resiliency one, because in effect, we're double counting it, because we ought to give it credit for being part of the master plan, which is now taking into account resiliency. So we already do that. The issue that you brought up, obviously, is when you got to buy a truck, it gets a zero. This is just, that's a different. You have to, I don't want to say finagle the numbers, but understand that there are going to be things that you're going to take out of order that are much farther down the list, just because they don't line up with our scoring sheet. But we do already take into account whether or not projects are in compliance with the master plan.
Yeah, but it struck me that that list was eighty-five percent of the money that we really coastal, I mean, in the general fund, that was thirty-three million, twenty-five to thirty million out of this, all these coastal beach improvements, seawall stuff and all that.
And a lot of that goes back to 2012. We have full legacy storms that we still haven't cleared out.
But we also have a lot of projects, too. So one of my frustrations with coastal resiliency is the permitting process. And I think this master plan can help us, you know, focus a little bit better on where to spend our resources, because we've spent millions of dollars permitting projects that ultimately fail just because of the backwards way in which the state requires us to do things. So that's where we're losing a ton of money. So if we can align some of those needed projects with the master plan and, I don't know, how to manage that just a little bit better, so we're not losing financial resources on projects that are never going to come to fruition. That, I think, has been a frustration of all of ours for years. And I know a lot of it is out of our control, but maybe there's something that we can't do to manage it better.
Fast news is much better than a long, slow baby.
Just one of the large numbers on that, those coastal resiliency, so the legacy projects, we're carrying out twenty-five percent. On the Sea of Point, which is an Omnicore project, we're carrying seven million dollars, because we're eligible for up to ten million dollars, or somewhere near the max. But on the Ocean Side, right now, we're carrying a full sixteen million, because that's not in the queue for funding. So we're eligible actually for twelve million dollars, but up to seventy-five percent. But we're carrying the full sixteen, so that's one reason that that's such a big hit. And that's probably the most important one that we'll do, because that's looking to protect the Stanhope's Pump Station. And we all saw the pictures from 2018, when we had to take Will out there rowboat to do it. So that's one of the most important ones, and that's sixteen million dollars.
All right, so I think.
And one other thing, there is, the Sona Project is right now in the process of working on the resiliency for a lot of children. So the easy move would be to kick out Gobi and just.
Right, yeah. Moving on. Okay. That works for me, that's okay.
That is a prior, it was fun that couple years ago, and that's.
So we believe our branches is hands up?
No, you are. You're closer. All right, so where do you, you know, where do we go from here? Suggestions of next steps.
Your name, ma'am? I am, I think this is good, this is very useful, like, we're all in the same boat, going in the same direction. I think putting together this group makes sense, maybe have it. And what I've heard is we need to establish a rubric. We need to assign stakeholders who can be tapped for the research, including funding, the funding options, because that's critical, obviously. We need to develop the policies to support the plan and with the implementations. We will now know that as the good rich red flags, I love that. I'd like to have those at all times. And we need to make sure that all of this work is clearly communicated. And how we're going to do that, I think that's the box we want to be in. So I would be in favor of, you know, we can talk about the suggested people, but I mean, it's the core group, and then direct them to take those steps. I think is a good summary. Do I miss anything?
I just think simplifying the message, too, and getting it out to the public.
Yeah, keep it simple, that's number four. There is community, each category. I'd like to see more of the narrative than what we see, you know? I'd like more news, more about what we're doing. Better traffic media about that, oh, my God. And I don't bear any time on. I know, and I don't want to read about it on social media, because it's nothing more than misinformation.
Don't read it.
And I think the little asterisk on that is, is this, when they're going through this is to see what advantage it brings from either an organizational consultant, facilitator, or communications person, I think that'll come out in the wash. That, you know, you'll have to talk to the first strings about financing it, but I think do a little more homework in that professional, because it's going to, you're right, it's going to get overwhelming, but if we can get some support.
And you're sure?
And the reality is, we all volunteers.
Correct, that's what we are, we're volunteers. You guys get the big bucks.
We don't. I'd like to recommend, too, that, you know, to Karen, the employee Karen's, Karen, Dave, Karen Campfield's directive to one of our committees, which if we can keep it simple to review, report, to review, recommend, and report, right? Review, report, recommend. And if each of our committees have each of these, if this subgroup has us and our representatives have that clear, you know, mantra in their head and mind every time they're looking at something and making plans, I think, hopefully, we can manage it moving forward to actually chip away and make some progress. I think we do get overwhelmed with everything that's before us and we try to.
Let me become paralyzed and numb it to this.
But I want to ask Anne and Karen, can I ask them a question? Is it, is this recommended core group something that you think your folks have bandwidth to participate in? You know, because you've got the finance director.
Really depends on how much time it takes. I think they probably do. I think probably all we need to do is figure it together and get back to this group and say, hey, look, this stuff's in the master plan, this is where we are on some of the stuff already. So the water resiliency, you know, we're doing the water treatment plan, we're done. I just looked it up today, we spent, I want to say fifty-eight million dollars on water projects in the last ten years. So that stuff's all going on. So I think that'd be the first thing for that group to do. I think something else that has to occur, and we talked about it, is we have to have that meeting on the coastal, the resiliency, and some of those projects, the policy makers are going to have to hit the head, like we did with Humor Rock, we asked for the easements from people, we needed forty-plus easements, we got seven, it wasn't okay, say, we're not spending any more money, we're not doing any, we're walking away. So I think we have to look at some of these projects and, for lack of a better term, kill them, so we can take stuff that staff time and put it on projects that we're actually.
Right, right, exactly.
It's not viable.
And if they don't want it, then that's that. We're done.
So I think that's, that'll be a big thing for us, too. But I think the big thing would be, if we format that group, the first thing we're going to do is have them come together and say, look at all this stuff in here, and let them put together what's being done now. And some of the stuff's going to come off, because we're already doing it. And then we're going to stop the stop getting done, all those priorities, where they fall, there's the zoning stuff, that goes back to the plan, you want Karen, we talked about Lannys and stuff like that, that goes over here. And, you know, just stay off social media.
I would say that some of the stuff you're doing doesn't mean it comes off of the plan, it just means it's part of the plan.
The stuff that's not out of the plan are things that. Do, it's being done.
Yeah, done. So we like to ask, done, it's in the process. All right, so basically, do we want to vote? We discussed, do we want to vote the master plan implementation with this group of seven people? What do you think?
I think it's worth to start. Take this, that group, a small group, so it's not massive, and go through that and sort of try to work through what are the things that are already happening, what are the things that aren't, what are the things that are really challenging, and maybe just come back and sort of report on that as an initial step. And that might help actually sort of set up a direction going forward. Certainly, they only have, they almost have to work through enough of the details to figure out what the next steps are.
Well, I think the important message there is, we're not starting from scratch here, no. We're not starting with a report that none of this has been done. So I think that could be a very optimistic first report. And so maybe someone would be willing to make a motion that our boards vote to warn this working group in the town, call it a meeting.
All right, I'm going to point the following individuals to the master plan core implementation team for turn one year, are to form until a successor is named. Jim LaDro, town administrator, Easyn Hall, finance director, Kyle Boyd, Director of Planning and Development, let's see if some people see him, Kevin Cafferty, TPW, Karen Joseph, and the name of a select board person to be determined. Does anyone want to go onto the panel and want to think twice?
Well, let's just leave a select board member to be determined.
We'll talk about it during.
Right, and name of a planning board member to be determined. Seven by Ms. Karen, all in favor? Both boards in favor unanimously? Four, and yes, unanimous, not the no's, right? Anonymously.
Well, I don't know.
You know, I want to thank you all for your time, because I really think that this is important. I really firmly, I firmly believe in communication. It's so important. And we can agree to disagree, and we have, and we will. But we're all on this together, all of us, and we care about this town. That's, otherwise, we would not have this, you know? Coming out of the cold, we'll be finally warmed.
So may I ask a question, Adam Chair? What will be the time in which we want to make sure a board member is appointed so that this working committee can start and, very much wherever that day is, you know?
Next week?
Next Tuesday.
I think next week, so.
We're meeting Thursday.
So within the week. And then maybe we could ask the working group to get back to us in forty-five days or some reasonable amount of time, and go with the first, yes.
Well, let's make it just a little longer for the first one, we can.
Do you want to say ninety days?
Forty-five days, do a check it. Doesn't have to be too formal, right?
No, I don't think we need a big report. We'll try to eliminate that.
Right.
Well, we both have members on the thing, we can do it as a sort of ladies' honor. And we don't have to be sworn in. No, it's just.
Sworn in, sworn in.
There you go. That too. All right, do you have anything else you want to say? You don't?
No, I mean, I thank everyone for being here, obviously, coming on us, like, and being here, person. And as we see, the audience didn't materialize, but they'll be watching us.
And as we see, the audience didn't materialize, but they'll be watching us. I think that this is important and we should do it at least once a year or twice to have some type of reading of the minds of the people. Okay? I'd like to take the motion to adjourn.